Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Auburn Planning Board to order. We'll begin with item one on our agenda, which is roll call, and I'll begin on my far left.
Darren Finnegan.
David Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Evan Seer.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Amanda Garette.
Tim DeRoche.
Riley Bergeron.
This evening, one of our regular members, Ms. Toni Ferraro, will be absent. In accordance with our policies and procedures, we will elevate one of our associate members to act as a full member. That means that they will have full voting rights and the ability to make motions. Tonight, we are going to be elevating Mrs. Garette to that position. And Mr. DeRoche will continue to act in an associate role. The next item on our agenda are the minutes of the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Are there any edits?
A quick question for clarity. There was a note that John Hutchinson of one twelve East Waterman Road talked. Marcy Johnson also talked and came up to the microphone. I didn't know whether or not we needed to identify both of them.
We'll ask staff to amend it to identify that both individuals spoke. Any other edits? So we have some, we have some new members tonight, and I'll just remind the new members that the minutes are for a meeting when you were absent. So before we take a vote on that, if you feel that you watched the meeting, obviously, and feel prized of what occurred, please state so now, so that you would be able to participate in the adoption of the minutes. So can you please just explain how you, what you did to become familiar with the meeting?
Yes, I watched the, the recording from last week twice, just to confirm I was up to date, actually, from last month, to confirm I was ready.
Excellent. And were you able to watch the meeting as well?
Yes, I was.
Okay. To that end, I seek a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? The minutes have been accepted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we just verify that the new planning board members have been sworn in?
Yes, I actually asked before the meeting, but yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three on our agenda is a public hearing map amendment petition to amend the areas outside the Lake Auburn watershed. Approximately thirty-three point four nine acres of thirty-eight point two two total acres on one fifty Andrew Drive, parcel ID three four seven dash zero zero three, from Agriculture and Resource Protection, occupying twenty-nine point nine two approximate acres, and low-density country residential, occupying three point five approximate acres zoning districts to suburban residential. The remaining four point seven three approximate acres in the Lake Auburn watershed district would remain protected through an ag zone designation. The proposal is pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. Before we begin this item, I want to remind members of the planning board that this item should be, should be reviewed tonight as an entirely new item, that you should strike from, essentially assume that anything that occurred at a previous meeting regarding this item be stricken from the record, and that you vote solely on the information and discussion that is either provided and that occurs tonight. Just as a reminder that this is, should be viewed as entirely new item. For members of the public, so they understand the process, we will hear a staff report. Members of the board will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. We will then ask, in this case, this occurred through a citizen petition. The petitioner or an agent for the petitioner to speak. Members of the planning board may choose to ask that individual or those individual questions. After that, we will open it up to public input section of the hearing. During that time, I will remind members of the public of the rules for public input. Once the public input section has been closed, the board will then move to deliberation and final decision. Having said that, is staff ready to present their report?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So this is a petition to rezone a parcel on Andrew Drive, one fifty Andrew Drive. This map that I'm showing on the staff report is a map of the, of Auburn's current zoning, as depicted on our, on the city's GIS. And on this, we have identified in, with the blue, the blue dots, where the Lake Auburn watershed boundary is. Everything to the left of that on the map here, I'm gonna scroll in a little bit so people can see. Everything to the left of that is in, is in the watershed. To the right is not in the watershed. The light green area depicts the agriculture resource protection zone. The purple area depicts the suburban residential zone, and this darker green area is low-density country residential. So amendments to the zoning ordinance, in this case, can happen when a resident submits a petition signed by twenty-five, at least, voting members of the public, so registered voters. One of the primary tests of a zone change is its conformance with the comprehensive plan. So one of the tasks today is to decide whether this zone change does in fact conform with the comprehensive plan and what to do about it, to rezone, to rezone the area as requested in the petition, to rezone a partial part of that area or something else. So the comp plan guides growth to originate from the city cores. So the first option that the planning board might consider here is to, is to consider that the, is to consider this part, this neighborhood as part of the East Auburn Village Core, and the future land use map in the comprehensive plan is not a zoning document or, but it really is meant to guide future land use in this area. So if that were to be the case, this area, the East Auburn Village, is, has been named in the comprehensive plan as being one of those traditional village cores. The petition requests that, that this area, all this ag zone here, is rezoned to suburban residential from Agriculture and Resource Protection. This area right here would, would be left or would be proposed to be changed to Agriculture and Resource Protection, the area in the watershed. So that is one option that the board could consider here. Another comprehensive plan-supported mechanism that the board could choose would be to opt, to zone a strip, to rezone a strip of this parcel. And the strip zones are another comprehensive-supported method of, of, of making zoning decisions in Auburn. An established residential pattern is, is usually required when, when deciding whether to rezone a strip. And that means at least six to eight homes per half mile, counting both sides of the road. This road meets the criteria with seven homes in a, in a quarter mile. The comprehensive plan also guides the city to consider reserve area adjacency or natural resource adjacency as, as reason to maybe not, to not add a strip zone to a certain area. It also considers steep slopes as areas to not apply strip zones to. Part of the parcel has slopes of over twenty-five percent, where a residential strip should not be placed in according with the, with the comprehensive plan. But they, it does name the twenty-five percent slopes as something there to consider. And we do have a slope, a map of the slopes on this, that, two maps, one from staff and one from, one from a, a resident. And if, if the planning board did decide to rezone this parcel as a strip, strips are, strip zones are typically four hundred fifty feet back from the center line of the road. So that is how this map is depicted. And I'll just note that these other house lots here on Andrew Drive are currently still zoned agriculture, and they, they, their depth is about two hu- two hundred forty, two hundred fifty feet from the center line of the road. So if the planning board opted to do this, they would only rezone twenty-one point oh six acres instead of thirty-three point four nine, as requested in the petition. But again, either could be chosen based on whether they wanted to, whether they wanted to consider that village core recommendation in the comprehensive plan, or whether they wanted to consider the strip zone recommendation in the comprehensive plan. The reduced acreage does avoid some of the steepest slopes at the southerly edge of the parcel, but is, but does include steep slopes as shown on the attached overlay map. In this option, twelve plus or minus acres would remain in the ag zone and protected through that designation, and about four acres would remain in low-density country residential. So another thing to consider, which is not part of this proposal, is the future of the zoning in this area. Gulf Island Pond here in the past had a boat launch that was proposed, but due to safety reasons, on, on the, on Route four, they opted to not have that boat launch. And now that the, now with the, the road having been improved this past summer, that could be an option to consider in the future as a, really a public access recreation point to this area. So a continuation of a strip zone or to allow more density in this area in the future might also include the area on the other side of Andrew Drive here. So the board has a few options. The first option is that the board could decide to rezone thirty-three point four nine plus or minus acres as the petition has offered and could be supported and is supported in the comprehensive plan in the language of growing out from the village cores. Option B is that they could rezone twenty-one point oh six plus or minus acres as a residential strip zone, or you could decide to take another route altogether. And I am open for questions.
Are there questions from members of the board?
Catherine, question for you. Would changing from ag zone to the suburban residential result in any adjustment in property tax or assessment value at all, or is it just a zoning change?
It's just a zoning change.
The typical values, though, that would be assigned based on the availability of housing as an option on that land would increase the assessed value. It's not directly a result of the zone change, I guess, but the assessor would use the neighborhood code for similar zoning to assign a value, which would most likely result in an increase.
Additional questions?
Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong. Part of this proposal includes the old Mount Gualeski area. That's part of what's highlighted here.
It seems, it's, it's the whole parcel. It's the whole one fifty Andrews Drive parcel, so everything on the, to the, to the easterly side of that watershed line.
And if I'm looking at these maps correctly, this is approximately where the natural outlet of the lake is as well, correct?
Natural outlet of the lake.
The, the natural outlet is to the south on, we can't see it on this map, but we could see it on one of the previous ones, to the south of the area that's shown on the map.
Thank you.
And some, some of the slopes from the former Mount Guile are on, on this parcel. I'm not sure if all of them are, but I know at least some of them are.
Been a while since I was up there. Just wanted to make sure I knew what we were talking about.
How many single homes would be in option one that were allowed?
So this proposal doesn't include any, any particular density or, or development proposal, but it would open the ability to put, it is, it is one residential unit per half acre in suburban residential. So, but unsure what the, what the buyer or the seller would want to do with that.
Approximately, how many homes are we talking at that density?
I don't, I could, I can find out.
Yeah, I think if, if there were zero environmental constraints, you know, maybe up to sixty. We know that's not the case. There would be a lot fewer than that possible on the land based on slopes, based on limited access to the upper portions. But purely mathematical, if you have about thirty acres, at a half an acre a lot, could be as many as sixty, sixty-four.
So it would be highly irregular for us to, 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 in looking at, in looking at the map and what we're being asked to change, it's sort of an odd shape in that it skirts around the residential homes that are there right now. So I guess my, my thought is that that would be, it, it could be rezoned to suburban residential, but the homes that are there would still be left in the ag zone. And none of them are conforming homes, right? Is that the case? Like, it doesn't look, none of these are on ten acres. That's.
Correct.
Okay. So that would require, if, if, if that was something that, if we wanted to bring those homes into conformity, so that they are not non-conforming homes because they're on ag land through a zone change, that would be a subsequent zone change. Is this what I'm hearing from staff?
Yeah, that would be, this zone change would only include this one parcel, but if you did want to extend the, the, the zone change to the rest, that would be a subsequent zone change, and you could loop in the other part of the land to have more uniform zoning and to bring these homes into conformance. I think it would make, I think it would make sense to also rezone, rezone these in a, in a future item.
So from a procedural standpoint, could it be rolled into a motion? Or would it have to go through the, the petition process and then be rolled into another review of a zone change?
Yeah, for, we have a petition in front of us that that schedule is kind of set based on receiving the petition. If you wanted to implement sort of the larger vision for that neighborhood and expanding that East Auburn Core, I would suggest a separate action, separate from the zone change. And then we would do a public notice that specifically lists the parcels that are included. But if you wanted to do that, we could give you a sketch map for an upcoming meeting to use that to make a motion like that.
I was gonna say, I assume that it would require an entirely new meeting because the zone change requires a map, identifying the area to be rezone, and since those are not on a map, we couldn't pick those up during this, this public hearing. We, we would have to wait until a public hearing in which those parcels are identified on a map.
Right, and all of the, yeah, and all of the areas within five hundred feet would also get a notice that would say that, that would be on the agenda.
And so staff presented us with two options. One is the, the actual petition, right, which is to rezone, not the entirety of the parcel, but a, a large chunk of the parcel. What would be the purpose of considering the strips instead of simply looking at just the, the proposed text amendment or the proposed map amendment?
Well, the strips originally are, were added to consider a way to avoid some of the steepest slopes there. Also, there is, it is named in the comprehensive plan that in areas adjacent to agriculture land, there are, you can consider a strip zone, and the strips have been used in various other parts of the city abutting otherwise ag land to allow for, to allow for the existing homes along that road, and, and also in this case to, to maybe bring some of them out of, into conformance.
Okay, I, I guess I was asking, I just sort of raised a concern for me because we know that we're also being asked to look at strips by the city council, and whatever gets decided there would also have implications should we choose to utilize strips here. So that would be part of that discussion. If the board wanted to pursue the idea of strips, keeping in mind that we're also, you know, tonight we have a workshop, right? And that's part of that workshop that we're gonna be looking at, so. Other questions?
The strip zone option, where it's a certain distance from the street, that would, in the, in the map drawn, not include those parcels, even though they are within that distance from the street, there would still be ag zone surrounded by suburban residential.
Right, exactly.
And I, I think in the past, the strip zones have been used where you don't have some other specific recommendation that supports like the expansion of a village core, that our current comp plan does, does support, but you do have an established residential pattern. So the expansion of a village core is a more specific recommendation in the comp plan to this exact neighborhood in this exact situation, and would be more appropriate than a strip.
Yeah, no, thank you for saying that, because that's what I was thinking, but you said it much more succinctly than I did. So that's what I was thinking.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, there is actually a petitioner. Is, is, does the petitioner wish to speak, or is someone speaking on behalf of the petitioner?
I, I spoke with the property owner who's here. He's willing to answer questions, but he didn't think that he would have anything specific to add unless you, unless you have questions.
Does anyone have questions of the property owner? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the public input section of the hearing, so I would entertain a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? During the public input section of the hearing, we invite the public to speak on this specific matter. We ask that you begin by stating your name and address, and that you speak into the mic at the podium. We ask that you do that because it is a matter of public record. The meetings are recorded. We ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes. It, sometimes, members of the public have questions. We will be jotting down those questions as you ask them. And as a matter of procedure, we generally wait until the end of public hearing, and we'll make sure that we ask those questions of staff. On a rare occasion, we may stop to actually answer a question. If we do stop, I will stop your time, so that I am not taking away from your time. Also know that if, for any reason, I interrupt, I will also stop the five-minute clock at that point, too. So to that end, is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Stephen Beal, five seventy-five Johnson Road. The veteran members of the planning board will recall that I've been before you several times in the last couple of years on watershed issues, and in particular, the Grace Lawn Road rezoning matter of last year, in which there was a subsequent petition effort and the repeal of the ordinance that was initially adopted. In conjunction with that Grace Lawn activity, I obtained a couple of copies of the U.S. Geological Survey map of the area, which includes not only the entire Grace Lawn Road, but East Auburn. And initially, I had no intention of speaking on this matter, but sitting here in November, without commenting on the substance of that meeting, I remember thinking to myself, gee, I seem to recall from looking at my topographical map that that area in East Auburn on the east side of Mount Guile is really very steep. I think I ought to take a look at that. So when I went home that night, I looked at the map, and it seemed to confirm everything that I had recalled from it, that the slopes were very steep. So I went out to the area just out of pure curiosity and took a physical look. I'd been in that area thirty, forty years before, but not at all recently. And I was really quite shocked at the elevation and the slopes in the area. So I thought to myself, how can I incorporate the geological information that I can see that's on the geological map on top of or subordinate to the map of the area that the city has? I'm not the world's greatest computer graphics person, but I mentioned the topic to a couple of the people that I'd known from the Grace Lawn petition effort, and one of them, Pam Russo, said, I can do that. So I said, please, superimpose the parcel at issue on top of the topographical map and adjust the scales so that they come out to the same scale, which he did after some efforts, and the result is this combined map that I believe you have. And on this map, there is the original thirty-eight acre parcel, and then there's a red line across it, which is the proposed possible alternative strip zone. The map is done in ten-foot gradients. The lighter lines represent ten feet in elevation. The heavier black lines represent fifty feet, so that every fifth line is a fifty-foot elevation. Right here on the corner of Andrew Drive, which is this road, and the discontinued section of North River Road, this is no longer a public road, discontinued, there's this marker indicating two ninety-six. That's not a street address. That's the elevation above this body of water, which is the Gulf Island Dam Pond. That pond is just about at the same level as Lake Auburn. It's two hundred and sixty-two feet. And you can determine, counting up, one, two, three, thirty feet above that, and this little marker here at two ninety-six is just above that marker. So using that as a base, you can then measure the elevation or count the elevation going up the slope. And the way I counted, the elevation above the level of Andrew Drive, which is not totally flat, but varies by maybe ten or fifteen feet in this entire area, it comes out to an additional two hundred and sixty or seventy feet above the road to the top of the former Mount Guile. Ski area has long since been discontinued following an unfortunate tragic accident there about forty years ago. So measuring this area, you can see that the area is very heavily sloped. The city has acknowledged that in preparing this map, which I believe you also have in your packets, would show this wide strip of at least twenty-five feet, twenty-five degree grade or more, going across the entire strip north to south, covers the whole area. And in many cases, And in many cases, it's a lot more than 25 degrees. I've seen some pretty steep stuff, and I would estimate that in this area up in here, the grade is 45 to 50 degrees. You can do your own calculations if you wish by reference to the map, because this line here going straight across the red line is 450 feet laterally from the center line of the road. Count the number of gradients, and you can see that even within that strip, it comes out to something like 250 feet approximately. So that's.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. I apologize, you've reached the end of your five minutes.
So I urge rejection for that, on that basis.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Russo, 745 West Auburn Road. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea how I came up with that map that you have. This is the geologic map. It's smaller. And it didn't match the same, they didn't match with what the city had. So I just want you to know that my major was earth science, geology, so I am very familiar with these maps. So I just wanted to give you how I know that this is correct. I kept enlarging and, and shrinking until I had the, the right amount of, you know, the, the same. I went through a lot of ink on my printer, and I did it two ways. One of the ways is that, and I, I didn't cut this one out, I cut it out so it all matched, and then I lay, laid it out, and the other way I did it was with carbon paper, not the old fashioned kind, I had to get nice stuff. And I matched all of the lines, so you can see that Andrew Drive, Route 4, the, all the roads all line up very, very well. So I just want you to know, and, and another thing is, is that when you make this decision, you really, really should drive out there. And I think you'd be really surprised. So I think that in order to make an educated decision, then people need to see what they're really making a decision on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board?
Good evening. My name's Razal Ward. I live at 1372 North River Road, and I've lived in East Auburn for a little over five years. During my time, I have spent a lot of time up and down Andrew Drive, and I've taken note of the serious issues with stormwater running off of, along Andrew Drive and the impact, think about the impact that this zoning change will have on increased stormwater runoff. During rain and snow melt, large quantities of water run off the steep rock inclines on the westerly side of Andrew Drive in several locations. The proposed parcel comprises primarily of rock and ledge. Water moves very quickly down those steep slopes, and some of the effects of this large quantity of runoff include a basement on the westerly side that in the last rainstorm experienced three and a half feet of water in their basement. A pool on the easterly side of Andrew Drive had three walls so compromised from all amount of water and pressure that it had to be filled in. They used two sump pumps and could not drain the water out fast enough. Many of the basements on both the easterly and westerly side of Andrew Drive frequently flood, and there are often large pools of standing water, which in the winter, of course, turn to ice on both sides of the road. There are only seven culverts along all of Andrew Drive, a pipe and one outflow structure along Andrew Drive. The proposed area of the zoning change does not have the capacity to handle more stormwater runoff, which will occur with changes to the land as it looks to be developed. Further stormwater management systems on the parcel in question will be difficult to construct and difficult to maintain due to the extreme steepness of the lot. This impacts all of the neighborhood and puts a burden on the city to rectify. Due to those physical conditions, I believe this lot is poorly suited for residential development, so it does not seem to make sense to change its zoning. So I respectfully ask you to take those into, those issues into full consideration and not approve this requested zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Biso, and I live on Andrew Drive, 199 Andrew Drive in East Auburn. I have owned property in East Auburn for 15 years, and I've been a part of this neighborhood all of my life. I would like to submit for the record an informal citizen's petition signed by 41 residents of the East Auburn community who have, are asking the city council and the planning board to retain the agricultural resource protection and low-density country residential zoning on the entire parcel identified as 347-003. This is a visual map showing the geographic area of the 26 voters that brought this proposed zoning change here tonight. As you can see, they live from Southern Penley neighborhood to the southern downtown Auburn area. Also on this map, in white, is 150 Andrew Drive. The geographic area represented in red is the 41 voters, I'm sorry, the 41 signers of the petition that I'm asking to leave tonight. Among many reasons, the residents of East Auburn have signed this petition is lack of adequate infrastructure to support the residential development in this location. There are no sidewalks for the general public or for the children walking to the East Auburn Community School. Andrew Drive and Oak Hill are dead-end roads, and North River Road is a private discontinued road. All three only have one way into or out of these residential neighborhoods. This creates a serious public safety problem if the roads become blocked because of downed trees, utility poles, wires, which prevent the fire trucks, ambulance, police, and public works equipment or other essential services from getting into these areas during an emergency. The roads on Andrew Drive are narrow. There are no turnaround on any of these three roads for large vehicles like the recent fire truck who came onto Andrew Drive because of a 911 emergency call and had to back up from Andrew Drive and turn onto the private discontinued road in order to turn around to leave Andrew Drive. In fact, the Public Works Department plow has already been stuck once this year in our first snowstorm on Andrew Drive, and again last year, they were stuck on Andrew Drive. There is no public water and sewer or streetlights beyond the East Auburn Community School. The East Auburn Community School lacks adequate capacity for additional students. In fact, it already has a double-wide modular home to manage the current student population. For these and many other reasons that are being presented tonight, the residents of the East Auburn respectfully ask that the zoning change request in East Auburn be denied. Thank you for your time. Who do I leave this with?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this topic?
Hello, my name's Ryan Smith. I live at 14 Weaver Street. I wanted to talk about a couple of things, one being the allowed uses in suburban residential. I think it would be ideal to at least look at the zone and see what could go here so that we can properly plan, because we should assume quote-unquote the worst. So it was pointed out to you earlier that there can be over 60 homes. If you approve the 33.49 acres, you are .01 of an acre away from 67 units. And also, if you did the 21 acre strip zone, you are at 42 units under suburban residential, and you could cluster those to avoid the ledgy parts of this. So you, you could apply for a cluster subdivision, is that correct, Planning Department, and you could use only part of this and put all 66 of those units really densely packed without the dimensional regulations, and then preserve the other part for open land that you can't build on later. So I think we still should assume that you could probably get pretty close to that limit. This also allows for one-family, two-family dwellings, so we are introducing multifamily to this resource protection land, but also mobile home parks. And you can get a heck of a lot more than 66 units in a mobile home park on that much acreage. And that's also on a dead-end road, which was mentioned earlier, is very dangerous to develop that much on a dead-end road. And matter of fact, a lot of other communities have dead-end road ordinances that only limit to about 15 dwelling units on a dead-end road for safety reasons. Because if, again, if a pole goes down at the beginning of the road, you now have those, that many people stuck there. And we, that's another reason why I think we should actually consult more departments around the city because of the potential development here. Another use is municipal uses in buildings, and then, as I mentioned earlier, the, the subdivisions that could potentially go here. I think also, we, we shouldn't make this decision based on the fact that planning board could see a site plan later, and that's because I think that there can be a lot of development here without even having to go back to the planning board. So for example, subdivision law can easily be bypassed through many different ways. So there was an argument made at, at the last meeting saying.
I, okay, go for it, actually. If you make the argument this time, and I'll pause.
Yeah.
Please make the argument in full this time. We are not considering anything from the last meeting.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, yeah. No, yeah, it actually came from staff, so that's why I'm mentioning it. That this would, could go to planning board later, so we should make this decision now, and then later we could manage the impacts from it. And that's actually not true, because someone could divide this and not have to come to you, but they could also make a 15 parcel subdivision and give it all to their family members, and that does not fall under subdivision law in the state of Maine because it's directly related family. So you could have 15 septic systems up there, and septics don't run uphill. They run downhill towards the people that are already living on this road. So you could potentially have a lot of impact on this land without this ever coming back for any sort of review at the planning board level. And I think that's, that's very dangerous. Let's see. And I did look to, and this could be a clarifying point from staff, too. I've never seen on our, I looked at the GIS, I don't think we've ever strip zoned suburban residential in an ag zone. So I, I think that's an important point, because most of the time, this goes to some sort of rural residential zoning or low-density country residential zoning, where we're going all the way from resource protection, don't touch this land, to suburban residential, put 60 units on this parcel, and I think that's just way too drastic for this spot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Harmon. I live at 34 Vista Drive. There's been several mentions tonight about this East Auburn Village area being a growth area designated in the recent chapter changes to the comprehensive plan. And the idea behind that is to establish areas where more high-density residential development could take place. But I think it's important to understand how that decision came about. So these chapter changes, a committee was formed, and there were three people on that committee. The mayor, a person from the planning board, and one member of the public. Compare that to when the 2010 comp plan took place, there were over 40 members of the public involved. There was no input from anybody from this East Auburn Village area when these changes were made. In fact, the, the committee met five times. Only one of those five meetings had any public notice. There were no minutes or written records kept of those meetings, and only two of them had video recordings from the Zoom call between the three members. That, those recommendations were made, they came before the planning board. The planning board spent approximately one hour talking about these and then passed them on to the city council. Even though one of the members of the planning board commented at the time that they couldn't understand why this was being pushed through on a single night, given the lack of public input in the development of this plan. They went to the city council, they were summarily passed, and now here we are. This is a result of those types of actions, where we have an area in the East Auburn Village in which there's been no discussion with any of the residents that actually live in that area about changes such of this type. And I think you need to keep that in mind. Before people go out and make changes to a single lot, there should be a comprehensive discussion about what happens in the East Auburn Village area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name's John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'd like to just briefly share a little bit of my background with you. In my professional life, I worked as a consultant primarily with planning for smaller communities, comprehensive planning and zoning. So I actually have helped a number of smaller communities develop comprehensive plans, write ordinances, write land use plans for their ordinances as well. And I also worked as a staff member, like your own staff does, for these communities, helping them go through these kinds of activities. So I'm somewhat familiar with the process and how it works. What I'd like to do is briefly summarize for you some of what you've heard today. So what you've heard today is that there are very steep slopes and elevations within this area in, in greater than 25%, in fact, greater than 25% across the entire strip that's being proposed as some sort of an alternative. And as was said, in many cases, much higher than 25% slopes. Those cannot be built on by regulation whatsoever. You know that there are thin soils out there, mostly rock and ledge on this mountain. It makes it very difficult for development of any kinds, homes, roadways, driveways, septic systems and the like. And the road construction requires that no road be, have a grade of greater than 8%. Trying to accomplish that in this area with these steep slopes will be a huge challenge to accomplish. You also must remember that there are huge quantities of stormwater that come pouring down off these slopes with very thin slopes, not much place for it to be absorbed, and you've heard the consequences that would happen. Adding more impervious areas like homes and driveways and roads in this area will only increase the export of stormwater. And there's a lot, the, the infrastructure, we're talking about a suburban residential area here. Think of around the schools, around the Court Street area, around Lake Street, that's suburban residential. That's what it looks like when it's fully developed. That has to have infrastructure to support it. Currently, there is no water and sewer beyond the elementary school, which is right at the, near the beginning of Andrew Drive. There are no sidewalks, there are no lights, there are narrow roads within this area, there are no turnarounds, it's a dead end that creates a difficult situation, as you've probably been looking at our ice storm review that's going on here. It can create real difficulties for individuals in that area. I'd like to say something a little more about the comprehensive plan because it's really important. The comprehensive plan provides a visual glide, sort of a suggestion of what might be possible. When those are developed, they're developed by looking at two-dimensional flat maps. That's the way they're done. And you look at sort of adjacency, what else is going on in the area, but there is none, and you've heard the time amount that was put into this. Very little detail looked at about what is the actual opportunity to develop in the way that's been respected. You may have a vision, but that vision has to be paired with what actually exists on the ground. The two have to coincide. Simply because there's an adjacency to another suburban residential, or simply because at some point somebody thought on a map, this looks like it might be a place to go, does not by itself command that the planning board should adopt that change. In fact, it's the role and responsibility of the planning board to look very carefully at what would it be like if we applied that, and is it an appropriate area to be used for that specific kind of recommendation? This, after all, does not come from any trained planning folks. It comes from people who sat around and signed a petition and got 25 signatures to bring it for you. One of the things that you all learned as I sat in at your training session, which was excellent, by the way, and I'm very glad that they had that, is that your city attorney said that it's very important in your role to get your decisions correct. Otherwise, the good people of East Auburn Otherwise, the good people of East Auburn, and the good people of this community, are going to live for decades with the decisions that you make here. So I'm very glad that you're going to take the time to do it. If, you've received a lot of information here that affects the appropriateness and ability to support the kind of zone change that you have. If you still have any doubts in your mind, or you want more information, as you were directed before, please take the time you need to get the answers that you feel that you need.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cleveland. I apologize, you've exceeded your five minutes.
I just want to thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Seeing no one, I'd accept the motion to close the public input section of the hearing at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? I think I only heard two explicit questions, although there are very, there are many comments that caused me to write down my own. First, is it possible for there to be a clustered subdivision?
It is. Yeah, it, it would really be encouraged to avoid the sensitive areas rather than spreading the houses evenly over the entire parcel.
And the other explicit, the other question that was asked was, have we used suburban residential as a strip zone abutting agricultural land anywhere else in the city?
We could zoom out and take a look at the map, but I don't think there are any suburban residential strip zones. It's usually rural residential and low-density country residential. Suburban res is more of a, kind of around the sewered village areas with a half-acre minimum lot size. It's our smallest den, smallest lot-sized zoning district that doesn't require public sewer.
Okay. And I have lots of personal questions, but I'll hold those. Did any other members of the board know any specific questions asked by members of the public during public comment? No? I'll open it up to members of the board to ask questions. It looks like Mr. Deroche has some.
Is it permissible for me to ask for clarification from one of our contributing citizens?
I suppose, what's, what's the, you would have to ask the board if we would like clarification, so it's going to be in your best interest to describe what you're asking for first.
Specifically, I want, I had a specific question for Ms. Bisson.
Uh, being what?
Regarding the petition she submitted.
Is that something, I guess I'll handle it this way. Is there an objection to Mr. Deroche asking this question?
I'm not in favor of it, because I feel like it's going down a slippery slope, not to use a pun, because we've been talking a lot about slopes here, but I'm not in favor of it. I will say I do have a question about the petition, but I have it for staff, not for Ms. Bisson.
Is there any other dissent? Seeing that the majority of the board is okay with it, as the presiding officer, I'll, I'll allow. So, Ms. Bisson, could you please?
Hi, Ms. Bisson. I grew up in East Auburn, and I know exactly where you're talking about. I probably put a thousand miles on my pedal bike in that whole area growing up. Regarding your petition, your petition was signed by how many people?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, and they're all residents of East Auburn?
They're all residents from Oak Hill, Andrew Drive, and North River Road. So the three roads that I also talked about as dead ends, that I talked about as the neighborhood, and there were forty-one of them, versus the twenty-six that were from the area that was completely geographically southern.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
So my question for staff is, with this petition, does that impact our directive and our motion? Like, what were, any next steps with that?
We, we can verify the format of the petition, and we can have the city clerk verify the signatures, which is something that we always do before the petition has any legal status. It doesn't impact your decision tonight, other than considering it as, you know, public input from, from members of the public.
Okay, so it's a petition that has not been approved?
I, I don't know if it's in the right format, or if the registered, or if the signatures are registered voters, but that's something we typically accept kind of during the week, during work hours, and then we'll bring it to the clerk's office and have all that verified, but we can get you an answer for the next meeting.
And for the record, is this your first time hearing about this petition?
It is mine. I'm not sure if other staff has.
I have not heard about it before.
I have not heard of it.
Okay, good, thanks.
So the petition is difficult. I'm going to read from page eighteen of our policies and procedures, second paragraph. It is not the practice of the board to take a poll of those in favor and those opposed. The number of people with a particular position is not a factor, the strength of their argument is what matters. And that's in there specifically, if we think back to the legal training that we received last week, we are not a body politic in the same way that the city council is. So, I appreciate that time was taken to submit a petition. Would really be whatever argument is associated with the petition and statements associated with the petition that would be of interest, not the number of people that signed it. Additional questions?
Two, a question for, for staff. In changing, potential change from ag to suburban residential, are there corresponding infrastructure or street width requirements, or anything else that would come with that type of a change?
Not with the zoning change, but if there was a specific development proposal, then we would look at the traffic that's generated, the needs for pedestrians. I know that there's already been some planning around what pedestrian improvements could be made to accommodate the similar concerns that were raised during the boat launch discussion years ago. But that would really be looked at as there's some change in the use of the land rather than the zoning, zoning itself. We know there's infrastructure nearby that could be extended, but exactly what would be extended would depend on how the land's used. It might be a single house lot forever. We don't, we don't know at this point.
Additional questions? So, one question I have is, which, which city departments, if any, were consulted with this? I know when we have a, a specific development, there's a, a development committee that, that meets, which is actually a public safety committee. Does anything like that happen for a process like this?
Yes, we would, we bring this to the monthly development review meeting, in which every member of the, or someone from every department anyway is present, and they're able to give feedback about the upcoming projects at that meeting. And I don't have any comments for, for this project.
There, there were no comments from public safety, fire, police?
No.
Public works?
Can I just ask a clarifying question to that? So Kevin, you just said there's no comments about this project. Is this a project, or is this a zone change?
This is a zone change. Thanks for the clarification. Yes, yep.
Something else that was brought up was the idea of mobile home parks, but if I remember correctly, we actually have a mobile park overlay. Are mobile parks allowed outside of the mobile, the mobile home park overlay?
They're allowed in the rural residential zone and the suburban residential zone, so they are allowed in existing suburban residential and rural residence, as well as the mobile home overlay.
So, not just mobile, but like, for instance, a mobile home park, I guess, is what I'm thinking about?
Correct. That would be something that could be proposed.
There was discussion about the East Auburn Village sort of being a change in the current comp plan. How long has the East Auburn Village been identified within the comp plan?
Since the, since like, I think, the first comp plan, but I can verify that. It's been, it's been there for several comp plans, and it's a, the principle of growing out from the existing village and downtown core has been kind of an original comp plan recommendation that is sustained over time.
So, so that, that was not a revision from the previous comp plan? That's something that was in the previous comp plan, and as far as you know, in, in comp plans before that?
As far as I know, Eric, maybe you can verify, because I know you were part of that.
Yeah, we, we can look at the language to see if it was strengthened, but the idea of growing from historic villages and the core of the city has been a longstanding principle in the comp plan from multiple comp plans. I believe back all the way to the nineteen fifty-eight plan, but we could look to see if the East Auburn Village was specifically mentioned in some of the earlier plans.
And to that end, I believe, in that same discussion, there was an assertion that the planning board spent one hour looking at the future land use. I guess it doesn't particularly jive with my recollection. Eric, I, I seem to remember us having at least two workshops prior to the public hearing? What's your recollection on that?
I, I remember that we brought pieces of it as they were ready. I'd have to look back at the record to say for sure how many were specific to the future land use.
Okay.
But I don't think any of them came before the board for the first time and held a public hearing and were passed along in one meeting, but I'd have to double-check that. I think there were workshops for every one of them.
Yeah, it's my recollection, actually, I was, I was absent at the meeting in which the future land use plan was reviewed at public hearing. And I think the reason I particularly recollect that is because I had workshopped it in previous meetings, but wasn't there for the actual vote, so, just to be clear on that.
There was, just, just to add to that a little bit, having, they, they weren't official workshop meetings, but they, we did have three separate community conversations that we discussed the land use, the land use map.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was my recollection that it, it occurred during more than a meeting. So, regard, since we're on the comprehensive plan, with, with regard to the idea that the comprehensive plan is made without consideration of geologic features, when, when these maps are made, and it sounds like the East Auburn Village was in a, a previous comprehensive plan, I know that we can at least speak about the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan. Were topographical maps used? Do they, I guess this would be a question specifically for Eric, because Eric would have been here. Were they using those kind of maps and considerate, and considering what sorts of things they wanted where?
We were using the GIS system for both comp plan updates, the two thousand and ten and the two thousand and twenty-one. Topography is there. I don't think that they looked at a lot-by-lot basis down to that level of detail for individual parcels, but that information, wetlands, the state inventories for valuable wildlife habitat, floodplains, all of that is looked at in a sort of a larger scale.
Okay. And so, one of the things that we heard that was reiterated, that actually came from staff that I'd like some clarification on, is that we received a number of homes possibly being over sixty. However, and that was, we were reminded of that by members of the public. The other thing that we were reminded of by members of the public during public comment was that there's a sizable portion of the lot that cannot be built upon, and upon which you, you cannot put internal roads. So, if you can't build on a large portion of the real lot, and you can't put internal roads to maximize its density, how many houses are we actually talking about? It, it would seem that the number that was given doesn't, I guess I'm confused. It seems that the number that was given ought to be much lower if a majority of the lot can't be built upon, and it'd be difficult to put internal roads in, given the, the slopes and the gradients.
I think we were talking about the lot size ver, in a maximum density, and that's with complete disregard of the natural limitations of the land. Mathematically, you could have over sixty. I would be surprised if there was possible to do more than a dozen, if you were able to get a road off of the end of Oak Hill to continue up to the, the upper sort of plateau, as well as using the frontage along Andrew Drive. But I, you know, without survey information, exact wetland slopes, it really would be up to somebody to really look at the specific limitations of that land, to see what they could propose for house lots, and then that would be reviewed against all of our ordinances by the planning board, if it's three or more in a five-year period. I think sixty is far more than what I would anticipate being possible on the lot. I would anticipate much less than that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess it was just sort of, those things didn't really jive for me, incongruent. We did hear quite a bit about stormwater, water runoff, and there was a member of the public who made quite a compelling case that there's quite a bit of it, and that the runoff currently affects private homes on the road. I think we heard of at least one basement with three feet of water, collapsed pool. So, this is my question. So, changing the zone doesn't change the runoff situation? The only thing that would change the runoff situation would be possible future development. If possible future development were to occur, would they be required to address runoff onto adjacent properties?
Yes, it's part of the, it would be part of any kind of site plan approval, to, to contain stormwater.
And that would be at the planning board level. What about the staff level for, say, a single home? Is that also a consideration?
A single home wouldn't trigger the same level of review as you would if you get to the planning board and trigger a stormwater permit, but there would be some level of review for setbacks and the sighting of the home and culverts for stormwater.
Stormwater runoff is a consideration, even when looking at?
Yep, just not the same level of review as it would be at the planning board.
Okay.
I guess to, to add a little bit more to that, in terms of construction technique, building code would dictate, so, I can't, you know, with certainty, I can't say what's in the ground now in terms of those older homes or the existing homes, but the newer homes would have permanent drain, foundation permanent drain, interior, exterior drainage that should alleviate those issues, you know, giving the, you know, given the conditions of the site, it should be something that our code enforcement should pick up in a, in a building application.
Okay. So, I mean, you're talking about, for those individual homeowners, I'm thinking about the other parcels that would be?
That's correct. New, new homes going in would have foundation drains typically put in, if we're building it to today's code.
But those new homes, if done as part of a subdivision coming in, I know that we heard that fifteen family members could put houses, but I think that seems highly unlikely. I've never, I've never seen that, doesn't mean it can't happen. I would just say that it seems unlikely, but that a, a, a site plan or subdivision would require us to consider those, and it sound, consider runoff. It sounds like runoff is, to some extent, at least considered for homes that are approved at the staff level. I, I, I agree with Stacy in her statement that we're not, we're not looking at, we're not approving development, but I think it's important that we look and say that the reality is if we rezone this development is possible, and perhaps probable, and what would the impact of that be? And the reason I ask that question is because I would like to know whether or not possible future development would require that runoff be addressed. Currently, it's not addressed at all, it's just an empty slope.
Yeah, and for what John said, it sounds like it is addressed on a single-family unit perspective or a development. So it seems like already there are guardrails in place to care for development in the surrounding areas.
Right, that is to say that development wouldn't negatively impact that, which is something that we should consider. something that we should consider as we, as we think about this. Um. Lack of infrastructure. So you've already spoken to the idea that, that there has been discussion of sidewalks. Um, so it was stated that there's no public water or public sewer, um, and that it ends at East Auburn Community School. How close does public water and public sewer come to this property? Is that something you're able to put on the GIS map?
Yes, so, um, water service, you can see in the blue, the blue line there.
Mm-hmm.
Sewer service is in the pink. So if you turn them on together, that's, that's, um, I can take a measurement.
Uh, yes, please.
So, um, from Andrew Drive to where that parcel begins, it's about, um, thirteen hundred or so feet.
Professional opinion, is that close or not?
It's, it's not required to, to bring sewer or water up that far. Um, obviously, if the densities were really high, we'd, we'd want to consider it, but, um, it would be, you know, in this particular case, I think it would be for the most part, unless you come through the back and you get an easement through that back piece at three hundred and forty-seven feet, um, it would be more than likely it'd be public wa- uh, uh, private water, private sewer-
Okay.
On these particular instances.
All right.
Just, and I, I guess just to add to that too, there's, if we're talking about controls and we're talking about stormwater, um, and the slopes and we're talking about septic systems, there is controls for, um, disposal fields as well. And that is with the curtain drain. I don't know if we had the curtain drain, the prior members of the member, of the member, of the, uh, planning board, um, we talked about that in the, um, Lake Auburn as one of the controls of adding an added thing to, to protect it. The, the design, uh, criteria under the subsurface wastewater law allows for the installation of these curtain drains when you have upslope areas that come down to a treatment area. So you're taking off the, the surface water from that area. So and diverting it away from the, uh, disposal field. So just, just common knowledge that that's a design criteria for soil, uh, soil scientists and site evaluators. And that would be something that our staff would be looking for in a, in a particular design on, on this particular site.
Okay. Ed, I know I've asked a lot of questions. I have one final question. Um, we have ag land abutting suburban residential, which, I mean, I guess I don't have the whole zoning map in front of me. Um, it seems sort of peculiar. I can't think of another place where I really, I mean, I, I, I can think of, I guess that's, yeah, maybe out towards, uh, the old Prospect Golf Course. You might see something like that. Um.
It's very unusual. Um, we tried to look back to see what created the exact boundaries that exist out there, and it's been in place for, um, a very long time. And we stopped looking back further to try to find the actual meeting, but it is unusual to have, um, suburban residential up against the ag zone.
So we don't know why they, why they ran suburban residential up there and then stopped?
I, I don't, and it's also unusual to have ag zone, um, on land that is not actively used for agriculture adjacent to sort of a village core like this. Um, it's just, it is unusual to have those two very different zoning districts that close together near a village.
Okay. And that's my final question. Additional questions? All right. If there are no, there are no additional questions, uh, my expectation is that, uh, folks are discussing, um, how they want to move forward or are making a motion in order to, uh, force debate on the subject.
My, uh, my thoughts on the first two options, the two options that were presented to us as, uh, motions to go forward, that the first option, uh, only changing the parcel zone, uh, essentially kind of amounts to strip zoning to me in this, because we're not including the properties along the road. Um, if this is a area designated for growth, then I think the more appropriate way to do that would be to change the zone and include those houses, which I think is kind of what option three is, is poking at, but without suggesting a whole, uh, new proposal, I think that option one, um, I would be opposed to because it essentially amounts to strip zoning. Option two, with the, uh, the actual strip, uh, proposal along the road, excuse me. It's also gonna run into its own problems because for the same reason that we're excluding those parcels, those homes on the eastern side of this parcel from being included in that change, um, and I think that would cause more problems, especially as for trying to designate the rest of that village neighborhood as an area for growth, uh, than it would solve by changing this, changing this zone. So my, of my, my opinion would be to not support either of these two. If there was another thing that came before us that encompassed those properties and more of the village core, um, and changed the larger area zone, I would, I would understand that that goes with the comp plan, uh, and I'd be more in favor of that than either of the two options that are in front of us.
So would you be opposed to an incremental approach in which we would, uh, adopt this, something like this tonight and then, um, simultaneously initiate a planning board initiated zone change to, to do just what you're speaking about?
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be the, in charge of the initiating of it, uh, of a whole zone change, uh, because I think there's, there's a lot more to consider as to what other parts of this neighborhood would be included. That's not in front of us right now, so I wouldn't feel good recommending someone that specific. So what I, in front of, what I have in front of us is the first two options I would not support.
So you would not support it unless it was done in whole, but you don't support doing it in part and looking at the whole?
I think that approving, so by, in part, what do you mean by in part? The first option?
Or the second?
I, I think the second one has more problems, but the first, if we were to say the first option and then also, uh, the, make a motion to, because I, I, I wouldn't, because I wouldn't know exactly the land that I would propose to be included in the future zone at this point.
Okay.
So then from a procedural standpoint, how would staff account for that then? So-
What I, well, I'm just, for my, my, my opinion would be that I would not support either of the options in front of us, uh, and nothing for staff, but if there were to be a city, a council, uh, initiated process or another way that it came before, so I would support it if it was just more encompassing of the, the whole neighborhood.
Okay. I feel like I heard something different, that you support motion A, but you want those other parcels to be included. And then that would make it palatable for you. That's what I heard, but maybe I'm-
Not just those other parcels, the, the rest of the village center that is designated for growth in the comp plan, which is larger than just those parcels along the road.
Other comments?
So Riley, you're referring to figure three as the rest of the-
Yeah, fi- figure three, but also if you look at the comp plan, the, the area designated for growth doesn't just end right at the end of that road. There's also areas to the, um, southern and eastern section that would be, that were designated for growth too. So it might, something I would support would be a, a larger zone change that encompassed that whole area.
Sorry for calling you Ryan Riley.
And just to clarify too, you're not opposed to the growth per se. You're just wanting to see a larger span of it. That's what I think I'm hearing you say.
I think that the two options in front of us are not the best way to accomplish that growth plan.
Other comments?
I guess I was, and, from a, from a strip perspective, looking at figure one versus figure two, um, I, I heard that in the past, we've done that in order to provide some buffer from the ag zone, but yet provide development. Are we, as, as a city, as a, as a comp plan, proposing that we continue to look at that? Or are we actually looking at getting, trying to avoid that? But I think in the current comp plan, um, and I was trying to discern which, how much that changed in the current, the last updates, we've used residential strips to try to provide some flexibility along existing roadways with an existing residential pattern and that meet the other criteria that are laid out in the, in the packet where there, there is an absence of any other support for a residential zone. Um, in this case, we have very specific support for residential zones to be expanded around sort of urban, the urban core or the village centers. Um, in East Auburn, Danville, um, a number of them are specifically listed, but East Auburn is specifically listed as one of those where we might not even have to go to look at the residential strip standards because there's a more specific support for expanding that housing opportunity near a core village where we're already providing services.
Okay. The other, the other, I guess, comment for me as I think through this is given the, the aggressive slope and the inability to build on it, it in theory provides a natural geographic break. So in some ways, I don't see a big difference between one and two if they're not able to get up the slope to build on it unless they extend the other street and get approval to do so. So I guess I don't see a benefit of figure two.
I, I definitely agree with that.
So to be clear, twenty-five percent slope cannot be built upon because it's not feasible or it's not allowed?
The, the ordinance is pretty clear that it, it's not allowed. Um, so if they were to design a road in there, they would have to really put a substantial amount of switchbacks to get that in there. And it would take, it would be a long, a very, you know, simple math is rise over run, right? So we're talking about a long road to get the slopes in that would make that work. Um, is it economically feasible? Probably not. Is it doable? Maybe? Um, I guess the other option is that, you know, if we look at the other half of that parcel, is the, is it a consideration for access from the other side? Um, so I guess that's the other, the other part of that consideration. And then the zoning, if we talk about cluster or we talk about, um, possibly using a planned unit development and we use things like recreation or subdivision and we look at those requirements for that, for lands set aside, um, that might be a consideration that, that we utilize this land for, you know, in terms of future development as we, as we think through it. Um, but those are just some other considerations for that, but, but to have a road cut through there directly for your question, Evan, is, it's highly unlikely.
I guess for me, it begs the question, so when we rezone things, um, and we look at zones, we rezone something because we feel it's feasible and that it's appropriate. Um, I'm, I guess I'm wondering, um, if you can't build on the slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent, is there a purpose for rezoning that to suburban residential in the first place? That is to say, staff presented us with two options, but there's a third option, um, to consider for approval, which would be to essentially adopt the map on figure one, but exclude areas with slopes greater than twenty-five percent. Um. So I just throw that out there. Um.
Yeah, we, when we looked at that at a staff level and talking with the petitioner about different options, it'll make for a very unusual looking map, but it's not, uh, prohibited to take that approach certainly.
Another comment? If there's no comment, I will expect, uh, someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to recommend amending thirty-three point four-nine acres of thirty-eight point two-two total acres on one fifty Andrew Dry, parcel ID three four seven dash zero zero three from Agriculture and Resource Protection occupying twenty-nine point nine acres and low density residential, low density country residential occupying three point five seven plus or minus acres. Zoning districts to suburban residential, the remaining four point three plus minus acres in the Lake Auburn watershed district would remain protected through the ag zone designation depicted in figure one.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There, there's a motion and a second. Is there any debate on the motion? This time I'll take a, a vote. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a workshop regarding resolve zero six dash zero nine zero six two zero two two and order one five one dash one one zero seven two zero two two, a proposal in which the city council directs the planning board after consultation with Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Board to conduct a public hearing pursuant to chapters, to, um, I should say, chapter sixty, article seventeen, division three of the zoning ordinance, and report in writing the results of the hearing and recommendations of the planning board pursuant to chapter sixty, article seventeen, division four of the zoning ordinance to the city council no later than March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, on whether, on whether to eliminate the income standard and the current strip zoning limitations in all areas outside of the Lake Auburn watershed overlay. As an ordinance text amendment, as shown on the attached proposed text changes, this item is pursuant to chapter two, section two dash four seven one, workshop or informational meetings. So, uh, for new members of the board, a workshop is essentially for us to get information from staff, um, to discuss, to ask questions. Uh, I think it's great that, uh, uh, the new members of the board were able to start to familiarize themselves with the material will help. Um, but I know that staff took our questions and comments from last time as well as the timeline that we wanted to set, um, specifically one of the things being the matrix that we would use to collect, uh, public input. Um, so is staff ready to kind of present, uh, what you've got for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, um, at the last, at the last meeting on December thirteenth, we heard recommendations from the Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Board of, um, how they would proceed as the city council directed. And for this, for this workshop, last time, the planning board has opted to, um, for this meeting, vote on the conservation values and, um, prioritization matrices for mapping purposes and also, um, discuss a possible community survey to get, to get input about these changes. So the planning board, there was discussion, they decided to wait to hold a public hearing and vote until, um, they can workshop alternatives to the income standard. Um, the planning board also directed staff to create, um, this matrix that we'll be talking about today, um, reflecting the questions and the guidance from the Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Board and also supported in the comprehensive plan. Um, and that's what we'll go into. So. So the comprehensive plan recognizes that there are certain qualities of the land which should be considered for conservation or resource protection, like contiguous open space, wetlands of special significance, or- Or the areas around waterways like shoreline zoning, flood plains. Open space, recreation. There should also be considerations. For, for which land should be reserved for agriculture uses and those might be existing cropland, existing farms. Areas with prime soils or soils of statewide significance, so like those really good productive soils. The area adjacent to these features, the comprehensive plan suggests should experience no or limited growth. And so this first table, this first matrix of land conservation, land use value. Shows features of the land identified in the comprehensive plan, which should be given deference for the ecological, recreational. Or agricultural value when making land use, planning decisions. And that's included in the staff report and I wish I could make it larger here. So. The way that this works is. In the, in the far, to the left, there is a column that is titled conservation values. In those we have, we have. We have named mappable, so mappable land features. That have been identified, first of all, in the, in the sustainability and natural resource management board. Suggestion for what we should map and what we should consider. And right next to them is a list of the, where in the comprehensive plan they are referenced. So. So these values here are listed in the comprehensive plan. And they're listed in this matrix because we believe that they are able, that we would be able to map them and show on a map. Which, where are these, where are these values? Next to that, we also have an environmental features. An environmental features column. And that is just the geological features of the land that we can map and see. Where we should prioritize or where the planning board would, might consider prioritizing. Resource protection and on the other hand, not growing or limited growth. So on the other hand, the comprehensive plan identifies features of the land where future growth should take place. In the goal to increase housing, there are certain priorities that the comprehensive plan names and these might include proximity to city and village cores. We saw that with just the last vote that we took, so proximity to where are those existing services and existing houses? Existing roadways and utilities. And this second table. Shows the mappable, some of the mappable. Features that the planning board could consider for. That might be beneficial to, to develop more. So in this, we also have the comp plan references for where it mentions. These priorities, we have listed here, city services, utilities, proximity to city or village core. Existing roads, abutting prop, existing roads and an example of that might be a budding property. And the times that emergency response vehicles might take to get to you if there were an emergency. Something that the board will give us input on tonight hopefully is. What is considered close to these items? What is considered to be in proximity? So for example, for. Nearby city services, are we considering nearby to mean within a thousand feet, five hundred feet? Are we considering exist, like how far from existing roads should we make a priority? And what's close for emergency response times? So those are some things that we should talk about here. And what these tables will do, so for each of these items, there's a third column that has, that says score. And that's intended to either put a zero as in it, there is not that feature in that particular area of the map or a one. Which means that that feature is present. And what the intention there is, would be to show, to make some kind of a heat map or. Another kind of, I think it was, there's another kind of map that we just spoke with our GIS coordinator that they would. Try to make. So we can, we can put these values into a map to show where should the development, where should future development be prioritized and where should it be avoided? So that might be the goal and we're hoping to get input on those, those features to see if we need to add more. And to see if these items properly reflect what we hope to capture. As we're finding. As we're deciding where to go next with this workshop. Another item that, that the planning board received tonight, in addition to the appendices is. Planning for transportation improvements and where on the map it might make sense to even have. A higher density development than, than just eliminating, eliminating the income standard in the ag zone might yield. So long-term growth and financial goals of the city should be central to deciding where and how to develop in the southern half of the city. And strategies to maximize Auburn success in these areas include efficient land use that maximizes value per acre. Concentrating growth to avoid unmanaged expansions of the main DOT urban compact zone and subsequent. Cost shifts for maintaining the state aid road system. And the third is maintaining critical corridors to achieve. The comprehensive plan objectives for the Washington Street conversion of Rodman Road east-west connector. And integrating turnpike capacity into our local road system to manage circulation patterns and congestion. So. Here, we have taken. Here we've taken the time to map out where some of these future connector road plans. And, and existing road networks are and. Where because of that, to maximize. To maximize future possible housing, it might even, these could be areas that the planning board might consider for possible growth. I have circled here, this is. This area is set aside for planning for the Auburn to Portland possible commuter system as in like rail or bus. Over at this other circle by the river, by River Road is. Is considered for future, a future additional turnpike access. And a broader plan there for context. This is kind of a, to show. The limitations of that turnpike study. So all of these background transportation and future land use plans are happening as we're talking about ag zone. So we have, so it would. It would benefit us to think about them as, as they would occur together and. In this as well, not a part of this process, but, but later on, as any new site plans come forward, including future development. The planning board might consider in the future strengthening the development review process to secure future rights of ways and. Access to, to these areas when they, when they might, when they might come about.
I think tonight, if we can get some feedback on whether or not these types of economic, environmental and conservation values. Being mapped would help you look at that. I think there could really be sort of a two-step process. For an eventual recommendation in what you believe you can do under the existing comprehensive plan. As you know, the future land use plan is not an exact zoning map, so there may be. Boundary changes to residential zones near the existing growth areas that you could accomplish without. An amendment to the comp plan and then we think those conservation values as well as the environmental and sort of. Social values or economic values related to existing public services and access to those. Could be sort of a bigger picture view that might even have to involve comp plan changes. Should the board decide, decide to pursue those or the council decide to pursue those.
One other item that, that the, that staff will present in next meeting is actual. Potential text changes as well and those, and how those are directly relate to, you know, dropping the income standard. Cause that was, that was essentially the directive from, from council is that, as we get to that, to that point. Obviously, the SRRB group and as staff and as we think about the best way to proceed. The matrix came about, the transportation topic came about, but we still understand that there, there has to be a little bit of rubbing the elbows with the actual text amendment. And we'll be presenting that information as well, so. Just to sum it up, you know, in terms of staff moving forward with the, with, with the heat map information. Just looking for some feedback on one or zero on this, you know, on the stuff on the front end. And I say things on the front end is that's the conservation values piece and the environmental piece. Those can be easily mapped under GIS. And we could, we could come up with a comprehensive map that really reflects that. A little bit more open is, you know, I call it the social services piece or social science piece of it, the economic piece and the services piece. And what, what does the planning board think is reasonable? You know, if we look at city services. Within five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred feet, what, what is that number? If we try to apply that to GIS, we need, we need a standard and we're looking for feedback. From, from the planning board specifically on those utilities, is it within five hundred feet? Is it one thousand feet? Is it fifteen hundred feet? Proximity to the city or village core, we, you know, these are some of the things that you guys as a board dealt with. Just previously in the last, in the last vote. Existing roads, emergency response times, I think these are all should be considerations as we develop. Areas to really consider where the ag zone income requirement could be lifted. And then some of that in terms of transportation and density, it may not be looking just at. You know, relieving the, the, the income requirement, but some of these areas really make sense for higher densities. I think Catherine did a really good job of. Identifying some of those areas that really relate to the transportation plan and then Eric really. Reiterated that we could use the existing comp plan if it's an adjacency and we can really tie it back in. To the comp plan. Catherine took time to go through the comp plan, as you guys can see, all these goals and everything. Identified for a comp plan reference, it's all referenced back to the comp plan. So I think that that's an important consideration as we move this, move this stuff forward and we make. A, a very logical and, and thoughtful consideration back to the council.
Any questions or feedback? So looking at the matrix, yes, we want, I, I, I think the board was very clear. I think it was excellent that we were able to get feedback from SNRB, they were able to go to their subgroups. I actually think that picked up a mar, a much broader perspective than if the planning board, you know, did its own. Ad hoc committee, to be quite honest, I think it reached a lot more people. But we were very clear that we would like to get something out in the mail. I like the concept of this. But. I think we have essentially three, we have matrices, but we have three different matrices, right? And so my question with regard to heat mapping is, does staff need a binary answer from the public? In order to be able to do heat mapping, does it have to be a one or a zero? Can it be a zero, one, two, or a one, two, three? Kind of deal. I, I ask because. I think that if I just gave this to a member of the public and said, hey, fill this out, like they would have no idea without a prompt, okay? So there's got to be a prompt, right? So under conservation values. Something to the effect of, how important do you believe it is to avoid development that affects the following? In my mind, being a teacher, one, zero and one, if that's what we have to use, then we can use it. But I'll tell you like, people love the middle option. They really love, and because when they're not sure, right? They would, they, sometimes people really want to say like, I'm not sure. And if we can do that, that would be great, but something like, that, that idea, you know, like how important do you believe it is to avoid development that affects the following? One, strongly agree. Two, not sure. Three, disagree. Right? And then they can go, and now it's clear to the person filling this out, okay. I've been asked the question, the quite, the specific question is how important do I think each of these are to avoid on this one? And I have three choices. Right? Under conservation values, right, it might be, how important do you believe? It is to preserve these, right? Kind of deals as opposed to allow for development, right? Same kind of deal. When it comes to the economic services. Same, a very similar prompt, it doesn't have to be big, but people have to know, you got to present them with a question, right? Like what, why am I filling this thing out? And I guess, I look at this, so city services and utilities. I think your average resident. Isn't necessarily going to know what's encapsulated in city services and then what's encapsulated in utilities. Right? So I think if there was a, a list of, and doesn't have to be comprehensive, I understand there are lots of things, right? But. Just the basic, so that someone can look at that and say, oh, city services, those are some examples, I kind of have a handle on what that means, right? So that's my feedback there and I understand what you're asking is you want us, you would like some feedback from us specifically on this matrix with regard to, do we want to know? Five hundred thousand or fifteen hundred sort of deal, right?
Yeah, yeah, so. And, and to see if we need to add anything here, but part of this, and I think, I think maybe we can, we can do, I'd like the. I like feedback here, but I think maybe we can do both. I think on the one hand, what, what I was. What I was talking about in terms of listing a one or a zero is to, is to say, is to map. Kind of survey aside, what exists? So what is there on the land? So if we were to take, if someone were to come in and take. Who is not from Auburn and wants to get an idea of, of. Where are the conservation values? Like where are these items that, that. Wetlands, et cetera, and where does, where is the city hoping that growth will go? I think. In part, the map will hopefully show what, what exists currently and. But I think also. Maybe having an, an additional one as well that shows. Shows what folks' values are so we can see, do we, do we necessarily. Give all of these the same, the same number? Do each of these, does a conservation easement? Should it get a, a one while existing community gardens gets a two? Like that, that's something else that we could do. And so maybe the feedback is. Do we want to go one direction or another? Or both? And also. What, what proximity do we want to use for these items?
So to be clear, I think what you were talking about with regard to making the heat maps in terms of like identifying where it exists. Is excellent. We're, we're going to need that because when we, when we get this feedback. From the community and when we sit and talk and we decide what the priorities are going to be, we're going to need to know where those things are.
Right.
So I guess. I wasn't making a suggestion to say that, that, that heat map, that the map showing where those things are is not what we're looking for. I think we very much will need that. I think we very much will need that. So I apologize if that was sort of how I came across.
Do you see value in, first, I guess, are there any other conservation or environmental values that you think we've missed or should we take some of these off? And do you see value in that sort of public survey as a way to weigh in on these and find out if there's maybe a conservation value that we missed between now and the next meeting? Is that something you want us to to pursue on a survey front?
Well, I guess I I heard from the board last time that we did. I'm not, it's possible that folks have sort of changed their mind, but that was sort of the impression I got last time was that, yeah, we wanted, we wanted that survey. And I I think it's going to be helpful too, as we move forward, staff has presented us kind of two different ideas. One, that we would look at amending the text throughout the entire ag zone. And then the other sort of represented here, that we would only change it in certain particular If the board goes with the first, we're going to want to have this kind of information so that we know, so we can prioritize for ourselves, but we also have that feedback from the public, okay, when we're writing our language and it's being applied across the whole ag zone, these are the things that really need to be identified as no goes. If we take this approach, we still need this and this is going to help us because we've got a whole block here, but we're going to have to look at those blocks and sort of a more granular level to say where that can happen, where that can't happen, and that will be based in part on avoiding some of these things. So I think regardless of how the board moves forward, yeah, I think it's a good thing to have this as a public input.
As far.
I think just to add a little bit to the conversation, having the heat map in the, you know, the the ultimate, you know, overlay, as we ask questions for the survey, that's part of the discussion, right? So they have valuable information, just like the planning board's looking at. I think that should be part of the discussion as well, to include the heat map and what we have for data, kind of summarize that data so they could, we could have, you know, four or five pointed questions, will we get, will we think that it's important to, you know, get the public's input on? So that's, that's my thought process on that. And that's kind of, you know, I'm just thinking out loud, but I thought that that might be a good process.
If you guys can, I guess the idea is that at the last meeting, we said that we wanted this and then we kind of want it, that we wanted it back by by February. So staff thinks you can do that, that would be great. I think it would be nice for folks to be able to look at the map and say, this is where all these things exist. I think that would be helpful, particularly if something's sent out and there's directions on how, you know, your average resident can go, can go find that information. So I've been doing the talking, other other folks' input on this, on this matrix idea or survey?
I just to clarify a question. So I'm hearing that there are two things that we're asking for, or at least clarification, one being whether or not we agree on or need to expand appendix A and then some feedback on appendix B, but also the second being a survey that is put together for us to disseminate and to get public opinion on that would include ideally the heat map? Is that, am I hearing that correct?
Yeah, I think it sounds like John and I might be talking about a similar thing but different. I guess I'm thinking that if the heat map is developed using these items, then there's absolutely nothing wrong with sending out this with an individual prompt for each set, asking folks to grade that. That way, we are measuring apples against apples and we can see what sort of like general opinion with regard to the things that we've actually mapped. Does that make sense?
Right, so we've said.
As opposed to like a, just a series of questions.
And that would allow us to start building the map while we wait for the final values that come back to be informed by that survey.
And that would include examples for the general public on the certain services?
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as clarifying services, so we've been really in in the natural resources. Catherine's done a great job of pulling all this together and we've had a lot of discussions about it. It needs to be a mappable piece of information for it to really have value. So a couple of them under city services would be, the plowing priority routes would be one for public works. We talked about they prioritize one through four, one being the highest priority routes and four being the last place they go to after a storm. It doesn't match up with sort of the concept of growing exactly from the center of the city outward because a lot of our in-town dead-end city streets at the core are priority fours. But I think that we could look at using priorities one and maybe two are high priorities and then buffering some distance around those to give a priority to the service of plowing. Walkability to schools, the school department has a very specific standard that they use for different levels of education and how far kids can walk to school. That seems like a really logical one that would would work with the core concept of growing from the center outward. We can look at emergency response times. I don't know what the right response time is, but maybe the fire department could provide us some feedback on that. And then that, I think those are, those are services that have existing city standards from the department that uses them. Proximity to the city or village core is a little more subjective that we could really probably use some input from you guys on.
So in that one, I think that if you asked 20 residents where the city core is, you're likely to get, you know, five different answers. You're going to have some overlap, but where that city core is and where it ends is not well-defined. And so I think that we are better served by describing it as a specific density. So proximity to houses on, are we talking about houses on quarter acre lots? Are we talking about houses on half acre lots? Are we talking about? Because that's something that I think people can understand. They can go and they can say, okay, a house on a quarter acre lot, like, I kind of know what that neighborhood looks like. Sure, I, I think, you know, when adjacent to that, maybe I'd be okay with it. But, you know, if we're talking about houses that are on one plus acres, I feel that's rural as an individual and I don't feel like we should be providing additional options for residential uses now. I'm not saying I agree with what I just said, but I could see a resident working through that process versus asking a resident proximity to a village center or a city core, and they're like, well, okay, so like, what's the village center? Where are they? Where's the city core? And we're talking about 500 feet and I'm thinking about like, there's going to be someone that thinks the city core ends at Union Bypass, you know? And to say that, yeah, it should be within 500 feet of that, well, you might have a resident say, well, no, it doesn't have to be within 500 feet of that. But now they've given an answer, which means that, well, the possibility is that could be within five miles of that, right? So it's not, it's not descriptive enough. I, that's my personal preference. I think you kind of get, you got to give, like, people an idea of what, what kind of, what does this look like? What am I close to?
What if we were to use some of those examples but really rely on the comp plan future growth area map as, do you think it makes sense to grow close to this core more so than far from this core? We'd have to work on the wording for it exactly.
That could be okay. We've heard over and over again, though, that folks look at those maps when they're mailed to them and we, when we send them an entire map of the entire city, we've heard over and over again in chambers that folks say they can't see it, they don't understand what they're looking at. And so I would feel confident looking at that, Eric. I don't know if I would feel comfortable asking residents to do that since we know that they come to us saying that they have a hard time reading them.
Okay. I think with the other, with all of the other criteria, I don't think that one would make or break the sort of guidance that you can get from the survey.
I think that I agree with your point that if, would it be possible in those surveys if, if you do send out a map to have a, not just a hyperlink, but a, one of those, I think we discussed this before about like a step-by-step, if you go to the city webpage and then you go to this tab and then you go to this tab to get people access to the digital maps? Because I think people had trouble accessing them and that would be helpful. Also, I also had a thought about, we're identifying all this land, but the reason that we are is because we're being asked to consider removing the income requirement as it might be prohibited statewide this summer. And I think we heard from NRCM that the answer should be known unless we have a robust plan. That's what we're doing here, developing places of priority for protection. But I think we should also, and this is probably the order of operations, is identifying the areas of priority and then this next step. But I think we also would want to still consider the ways, the means by which we would still protect that land. So say we identify it as as something that's valuable to the city, if we don't have this income requirement, which which methods are available to us to to prevent development?
Yeah, well, I think that's sort of, like, staff is presenting this as a possible alternative to take off pressure from the ag zone, but this is like very different than the train of thought you just expressed, right? Like, that's the kind of the train of thought that we went down, was like, hey, well, what protections are we going to put in place? And so staff is throwing in an alternative that says like, well, you know, leave protections in place, but just get rid of them, go go high density here so that way, that's no longer ag zone. But to do that, to do that, staff might differ with me on this, to do that, I think that requires an actual comp plan change. But, yeah, no, it requires us to identify what are the things we're trying to avoid building on, right? So.
Well, I guess also, to take a step back, so if, to the questions, you know, says that we were asked whether or not to eliminate the income standard in the current strip zone limitations outside of like watershed overlay as an ordinance text amendment. If the answer is, we think that the answer is yes, but we have to come up with a better way to do it, I think that this, this mapping of and prioritizing of certain areas is helpful to identify places, but if the answer is no, we do want to leave these protections in place and then we come up against the the LD 2003 that makes it prohibits that use, what a backup plan to protect that land could still be from development.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. The farther I get into this, I think there needs to be a solution that goes everywhere. I understand staff's intent in doing this and I see value in pursuing the concept. But regardless, I think we still need to think about, yeah, the rest of what's going on. But so back to, back to, back to this, though. So I talked a lot about this, like, I, and I don't mean I talked a lot about this, I mean, I talked a lot and I was talking about this, okay? So staff is asking for a definitive. So first, is there anyone that thinks that staff mapping where these things exist on a map is a waste of time and they should not do it and the planning board is not going to use it? Is there anyone that thinks that? Great, means that we all think it's worthwhile, so yes, move forward. Do folks, and I'll, I'll do this one in a positive instead of the negative, okay? Do folks want feedback on the same things from residents of the city of Auburn sent out as a mailer or an online survey? Is that something folks want?
Yes.
Like, yes? Yeah?
Absolutely.
Yeah? Do we want it in this form with prompts and some kind of rating? Or do we want it in the form of a series of questions?
I think it'll be easier to digest and to generate if it's in that format with prompts than a separate series of questions that might not be in line with what those are.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Dave, but I would also say too, just kind of going back to your point, we were saying like the affirmative and then the negative, I think I would be very careful about how the prompts are crafted so that it's as neutral as possible.
I agree.
Yeah.
Can I just?
With scaling, like you mentioned, yeah.
Sorry about that, Tim. The only, the only, I think, thing that I'm kind of playing with the, this here, and we'll, I'll go any direction that the planning board wants to go, but for me, the values on this page here, where really we're talking about environmental values and conservation values, those are absolutes that we can identify on a map. And it, I don't know, and I, I love the public process piece, but I don't know if there's any value of asking those specific questions. But this, the second piece, and I always refer to it as the social science piece, certainly that is something into, as Eric laid it out more, there's more information there, we we should dig and we should ask what's important to the community for services and and relation and where the growth should be. I think those are very specific questions. But this stuff is really NRPA, Natural Resources Protection Act, all our environmental laws and rules really dictate a lot of that information, our waiting bird areas and a lot of that stuff that's already out there is just information that I think we provide that heat map to give the general public an idea of where areas would be protected really by controls outside of, of, you know, their purview per se. It's, it's either by state, state law or natural features that really minimize development. So I, I just want to add that to the conversation as you guys work through this.
You know, John, I really appreciate that you brought that forward because I do feel like sometimes when we have these conversations, everyone thinks it's the Wild West out there and like, there's land and it's just like, anything goes. And you provide really good parameters and guardrails around that there are things in place for protection and development. So I appreciate that.
And I agree to a point. Something like a wetland obviously is regulated at the federal, state, and even local level, shoreline zoning, okay? But something like unfragmented open space, existing farmland, landbanks, those things are not regulated at any level. Those are things that we can either choose to try to avoid disrupting, or we could choose to say, it's okay if we do disrupt those things. So I hear that you're saying the back is the piece that you kind of want to hear about, but, you know, as, as a planning board member, when I think about the purpose of the resource protection zone, and as I'm formulating an ordinance, and formulating ordinances is one of the few times where we actually get to act in any sort of a legislative way, right? Like, in this sense, in writing an ordinance, we actually are kind of stepping into a more political venue. I do want to know, does 80% of, is it, is it, is it 5% of Auburn that says we really need to preserve farmland? Or is it, or is it 95%, right? Because we've got limited resources and to me, asking those kind of, those things that, we don't have to protect those things, we choose to. But understanding whether we're going to continue to choose to protect those things is going to help me when I either craft language or look at language to, I'm losing my words here, but kind of judge or amend, right? So.
I guess, sorry, Stacy.
You might be out of words, that's why.
I think, I think where, for me, having the survey feedback to then overlay that with the yes, no binary for the heat map would then allow for a joint score that could then be reviewed to look at, okay, you know, this is an area that is a zero, but yet it's really. but yet it's really of interest. Or is it, you know, so maybe you can, I'm just thinking long-term processes to put things into quadrants or, or you know, something that would allow us to really identify some of those areas. And without the survey piece, then I think we're missing that feedback. So I was thinking of sort of long-term, how would we leverage both of those together?
Well, to parlay off of that and just putting this out there for sake of conversation. Um, so to what you're saying, right? So to get an understanding of the importance from a public perspective, but then also layer over that some education, right? So what you just said is there's some certain defined parameters. And if the public feels on a scale of one to three that this is super important or there's some, some certain interest in it, that's great. And then that can be an area for education, right? So you have an interest in this, there's going to be public opinion about this. Um, this is how we can educate you that A, if we do move forward with this, that there's not a whole lot we can do for it because there are already some limitations. But just so you know that this is, am I making any sense?
John, do you still need an answer though as to with regard to the social pieces?
Proximity.
Proximity to things and distances, you're still, you need that feedback.
They do absolutely because they, when I'm asking the question three times, isn't going to necessarily work. So do we want?
It sounded like Eric was able to whittle down some of those based on other, um, either things within, you know, the city or other departments as to what the recommendations are. Where, where are we left with a firm need?
I think that proximity to Village Core, although we could use, for most of those, we could use the school walking distance to really set that if that's what you wanted, an existing standard. And then we could talk to the fire department about urban response times and, and try to set those boundaries accordingly based on where they already have services and dispatch services.
Could the public just put those in line, like 1,500, 1,500 feet in priority of what they wanted per the survey?
We could ask on the ones where we don't have sort of an existing accepted standard from that department, sure.
I think that's a good, a good compromise, yeah. Does staff feel like they have what they need from us on this?
Yep. At this point, yes. Thanks for the feedback too, by the way. It's really, it's really good two-way conversation. Appreciate it.
Does staff feel like this is something that we will get feedback on by next, by next month? That is to say, we will have some resident responses to be looking at?
If, I think we can get it out early this coming, this coming week. Um, and hopefully, hopefully we'll have responses by then.
Okay. And the idea prompts, but I think Stacy's correct, they need to be sort of a neutral.
Yes. Yep. Non-guiding questions for sure.
Yes.
I have another question about, on appendix A, not really a question, suggestion. There's nothing on there talking about recreation. And that is a very high value in this area and why people, a lot of people live in Auburn. Cause you have proximity to many different ways of using the outdoors, about every single way possible.
So are you suggesting that as something that they would want to be in proximity to? Or I think appendix A is sort of looking at how important is it that we don't disrupt these? Are you really thinking about appendix B and saying it's important that we are in proximity to these? So just, I'm just asking, I'm not sure which appendix you want.
I hadn't thought about B, but it's, would be important on B as well, actually.
I think it falls more under B.
I can say, I think it sounds to me that the things in A are things that are GIS, yes, no, they're there, they're not there. I don't know, do we have a full, I mean, within GIS, do we know which ones are rec areas versus not rec areas? Cause otherwise if not, then I would say it goes to B.
Yeah. Well, I'll just say too, um, going back to like that Andrew's Drive, right? I learned previously, I'm not sure if I can say that, that, um, it was used for recreational purposes for people around there, right? So I, I think there are some formalized recreation areas, right? And then there's informal ones that people leverage as well.
And we, we could ask questions around sort of the permanently protected formal ones that we're aware of. But I think there's a lot of recreation taking place on private lands that there's no way to map that.
But we could, we could map, um, existing trail networks. That's something that we could do. Is, or parks, existing parks, um.
Bike trails or cross-country trails.
Right.
Yeah, I think that would be great, actually.
Paul, I appreciate that and I feel like we should probably keep that more front and center as we move forward.
Other, other feedback before we let staff take these comments and. All right. So we'll be looking for, it sounds like so next month, we'll be looking for some survey results. We'll have the heat map to be kind of comparing some of that stuff to, and also identifying where some things are for ourselves. And that we would have some language to start looking at. Um, I think the idea would be that we would want to be looking at that language through the guise of the comp plan, the current ordinance, um, the SNRB recommendation, and then, um, the, the heat map. And then also some of the, the resident feedback. So. Sounds good. Excellent. Uh, the next item, workshop, city council ordinance 07-02072022. Discuss the moratorium on development proposals involving definitions around public safety facilities, detention facilities, correctional facilities and or government offices at a site on which one does not currently exist. The item is pursuant to chapter two, section two dash four seven one workshop or informational meetings.
So we get a pretty clear direction from the planning board that we, back to this matrix idea and definitions. Um, staff took some time to essentially put together some definitions that we, uh, that the planning board should consider to add into our ordinance. And then as we add these definitions into the ordinance, uh, staff took the time to evaluate what type of land use or what zone we may apply it to. Just to kind of go through this, um, you know, S is representative of special exception. That means we come back to the planning board for new, you know, just for our new members. Permitted is, is typically done at the staff level, given, uh, obviously some things, given the size, it automatically comes back to the planning board, but, and then X is representative of prohibited. Um, staff has provided some definitions. Um, these are specific definitions that, uh, a lot of them, if we click on them, um, in the electronic version, it's actually, a lot of it's state statute, um, specific definitions. And then a lot of them come specifically from the city of Augusta, uh, under their definitions, what they use. Um, so that, that's kind of where the original information came from. And then if, if the planning board is in agreeance of this, then, then staff can really start the, the hard work of redlining, uh, into an ordinance change and, and how it will be applied and where it would go. Um, and this is kind of a, a general cheat sheet for us as we make those, um, those edits in the ordinance. And we can reference back to those. So we really want, um, staff's feedback on, on the definition itself and how useful they would be to our city and then where they would be applied.
So am I seeing that actually not, based on the grid, nothing is permitted? I don't see any Ps on here. So everything is either a special exception, exception or prohibited?
That's correct. That's what, that's what we're suggesting. Again, there could be, there could be a suggestion that comes from, uh, a recommendation that comes from the board to the council that something's permitted. Um, but right now everything comes either back to the, uh, planning board or it's not prohibited.
Okay. I just want to clarify the ask, cause when I look at the packet, it says, uh, review metrics for final approval or of potential text, final approval of potential text amendments. So what I think I heard you say is we'll review it, provide our feedback and then you would take it back.
That's correct. Yep. I would take it back and then take, make all the text, uh, changes. And then, um, we'd, we'd have one final vote on that and then make the recommendation to the, to the council.
Would you also review any suggestions that we made to the zones?
Yes. Any, any changes that we make today, we'll, we'll apply those into the text changes.
Okay. But you would, would you also take it back and review as well? Like, so just like throw in this wild crazy idea out there, like say we said, um, a detention facility was, was permitted in, you know, residential, you know what I mean? Like you would take that back, you know what I mean? Like, would you review it and then?
You know, if the, if the board was in, uh, all in agreement that that was something that they wanted to do, we would make that as, as a text change.
Mm-hmm.
And then it would come back to the board for a vote and then we, you know, then it would get pushed on the council from there.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
And we'll make sure the public's aware of that for the next public hearing.
So the, these, the, the Xs and Ss are based on current zoning and, and everything else? And as well as staff thoughts and recommendations based on the definitions of?
Right. That's, we, we looked at, um, either something that's physically already there. Um, you know, one is, one that's really questioned is the jail and the detention facility. And we only see that it's, it's allowed in, in T 5.2. That's because of the existing location of the correction, of the, um, the county jail facility. Um, so again, it, and it's all based on definition, right? So, um, the county doesn't, is not necessarily in the correctional business, but they're in the, in the jail business and the detention business where it's, you know, they're waiting for trial. They usually hold people in that, in that regard. Um, so they're, they haven't given it essentially a court order yet. Um, so those are some of the definitions as we work through this where, where it could be applied and, and not be applied. So this was our best effort. Um, I'm not saying that it's 100%, though.
And I, I know you weren't here for previous meetings, but I think one of the key points here is that right now we have a very broad definition of municipal civic or public service buildings. And we think that there probably is a lot of value in separating out some of these uses to have separate standards and separate zones. A jail versus a, a fire station dispatch or something like that.
Thank you, Eric. I got one little knit, I'm assuming that the lowercase Ss are not something different than the uppercase Ss. Okay. Sorry. I just, they caught my eye. I just want to make sure they weren't anything specific.
So you're asking us for feedback on these specific definitions. Municipal uses, I mean, that's essentially what we have right now. And I think that that's so broad, um, that I, I don't, I don't think it's useful to us. I think that's why we're here. I also think jail, um, jail is almost too specific. On, on my list, I, I liked the idea of the public safety services. I also liked government services, but I think if we're going, if we were to adopt both of those, we would want to remove public safety, police, fire and emergency rescue out of government services. So that they're specifically covered only under one definition. I like the idea that government offices are split out. I understand the need for the municipal or public utilities and communications facilities. I think those are quite different from, uh, other uses. And so for me, I, I, so I like that utilities are split out, government offices are split out, government services ostensibly because a government office could be somewhere where people are working, but services aren't rendered. To me, government services is going to be someplace where municipal employees are working, but also services are rendered, i.e. city hall, I can come in, pay my taxes. I like that public safety services then also becomes its own definition. And then after that, it comes down to how you want to define, um, a jail. I think that, um, because we don't have to worry about police stations because that's caught up in that public safety services. And for me, I kind of like, uh, the detention facility, but the piece out of the correction, correctional institution that I like, is the idea that refers to, um, adult and or juvenile, uh, adult and or ju, or juveniles. Whereas the detention facility, um, only refers to adults. Um, I think the correctional facility, um, quite frankly, I like the name better.
Well, I think the correction facility, I think the difference between the two, the primary is it can be public or private, the correctional institution versus when you look at detention facility or those, it's not designated as public or private.
It could be either, because it's not designated.
Well, then why is it designated in one?
This is just two different definitions that were, this isn't like a definition from one town. This is like.
No, I know it's.
Yeah. Yeah. Because one town decided that they needed to define it, I guess.
If I could add a little clarification, um, detention facility is really, the big difference between correctional and detention is that detention facility allows for a step-down facility. So for, for instance, um, you may be done your, uh, your term in a correctional, but you have a step-down facility. So you're still a ward of the court. And that could be, that could be a mental, um, thing. It could be, you could be still a ward of the Department of Health and Human Services. Or it could be, um, where you're kind of like in a halfway house per se. Um, and they have very specific rules and guidance where you've got to check back in, um, at the end of the, at the end of the day. I know that the state has both of those. Um, and, um, the state is often looking for new locations to build. And that definition may, you know, it potentially could come to the city of Auburn. And, um, just having that awareness, I think is important for this discussion that there is a difference between a correctional institution and a detention facility where they're, they're holding somebody like a, like a step-down facility.
Thank you for saying that because now that you say that, it's quite obvious to me, but I did not pick up on that on first read. So my suggestion, um.
Could we add halfway house to the verbiage?
Yeah. Such as a halfway house. So if there's such as a, or something to give away that this is not a jail per se, then yeah, I think that makes sense.
Would safe voices also fall into that?
I believe so. Yep. So yeah, it, it could be a halfway house or safe voices. Any one of those could fall under that definition.
I can't help but think that maybe for the general public, um, I know from our perspective, we see four line items and we're able to palpably understand the difference. But for the general public, they're just going to refer to everything as a jail or a correctional facility. I'm wondering if we need as many different definitions or if we can have one that's generalized outside of a halfway house, since they're all going to be, it looks like they all have pretty much the same limitations as well. If we need as many definitions, because Auburn residents are going to look, whatever it falls on as a definition that we're looking at here in the matrix, other people aren't going to say, oh, well, that's a correctional facility or, oh, that's a jail. It's just going to be X in the resident's perspective. So I'm just wondering if maybe we can just narrow it down to two things where one is more what everyone knows as a jail and a halfway house, like we spoke about as maybe a second one.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I think we drop lockup facility and jail because the two of those are already encompassing the others and they're not particularly descriptive either. They just seem sort of redundant, but I understand why they were done, because staff was giving us multiple options, but if I were to choose some of the options, those would not be the, the ones that I would choose off of here.
I could go with that.
So you're saying to merge lockup facility and jail into one line?
No, I, I would have a correctional institution and a detention facility, and I, I think that between those, they capture everything that lockup facility is talking about, and that a jail is talking about.
Did you say?
Without needing a more discrete definition.
I guess I, for me, I would say, given the staff recommendation of correctional facility being in the industrial zone versus downtown, where, I guess, for me, with, if we combine them, we certainly have to think about where we would want them.
Absolutely.
And I guess for me, having them broken out would allow me to say, I'm okay with one down, but one of a larger size somewhere else.
All right, so I'm kind of like a dog with a bone on this one right now. Do we care if, um, one says public or private, and one doesn't?
I don't care.
No, it doesn't matter to me.
I don't care. And, and I take it back, I think you're right, maybe lockup does need to be included, because correctional institution doesn't allow for that being held prior to a trial kind of deal. But merge them, I, I, I agree with Tim, there's, there's too much. Those are all a little too similar.
Yeah, and I guess, just like, the reason why I left them in there is that there is always a, a look-up of a definition under the ordinance, as we look up, you know, we, we, you may read through detention facility, and you find jail or lockup facility, and, and you wonder what that is. So a def, having a definition in the ordinance sometimes is a little bit clearer, so you understand and define it a little bit better, staff, it's more of a staff ask, uh, it doesn't necessarily come to the, the planning board, per se, I think you guys are pretty clear. Um, but the, having the definition may be helpful, but not necessarily under the, you know, the land use zones. Having that defined is not as important, but for a definition, it may be important to us, and that's the reason why I left them in there for the, for conversation, for, to get feedback from the planning board.
Okay, so to gain some forward momentum, are we all in agreement that we can cross off jail?
Yeah, do you need jailed, other than, does jail do something for you that correctional institution doesn't do?
It's just a definition, and that sometimes it's, it's helpful to have a definition of a word that's in, in a paragraph. That, that's, it would be helpful for us, but it's not necessary.
They are in different zoning.
Can you just say a jail is a correctional facility, or correctional institution? Does it need its own definition, or can you say this word shall be used interchangeably with this one? I'm asking, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'm seeing specific that jumps out is the reference to 12 months.
Right, jail is short-term on this.
Well, I also see that the detention facility definition refers to a jail, but it also refers to a lockup, and we don't have a definition for a lockup, so is it, is this something that's that necessary of a definition?
It's not, it's not necessary, we can, we can line them out, I don't.
You know, I don't, I don't think it's important, it sounds like there's no reason to list them as allowed in different districts, or distinguish them in a way like that. But if somebody comes in and says, I don't know, I'm not a correctional institution, we only hold people for less than 12 months, then at least if we say in correctional that it includes jails, and we define a facility at less than 12, then we just don't have to have that argument. Even if it's not a separate use category, but it is defined as being part of the correctional facility.
So jail seems like that's helpful for you.
I think it is, with the 12-month distinction.
So are we in agreement that we want to keep jail?
No, I, I agree with Tim, this is cumbersome, I, I, I would, I would prefer fewer definitions, but I'm also hearing from staff that you kind of need them.
We could just do one line item that is jail, comma, detention facility, comma, lockup facility, and then a whole separate line item for correctional institution. Would that kind of, does that satisfy the needs for staff and, and the board?
We could work in that time distinction, either more or less than 12 months, or not time limited, something like that, we could make it work, and still cover that in that definition.
Yeah, I, I do like that idea, though. The, the reality is, we're not going to be allowing these things all over the place, so, and I don't think it's going to much matter to the community with regard to siting and restrictions, whether or not this place is only holding people for three to 12 months at a time, or if they're sticking around for two years. Operationally, people are going to say, they are building a jail right there. And so we would probably have the same considerations for both of those, both of those institutions. You're going to be worrying about traffic coming in and out, you're going to be worrying about, proximity to residential uses, proximity to schools. I'm not sure that we would put totally different restrictions on something where you're going to be here for six months versus you're going to be here for two years.
I, I think where it comes in is there are a lot of county jails throughout the country that are short on funding, and they see opportunity in housing federal prisoners for longer, longer terms than they typically would have housed local prisoners to generate revenue, and I think it gets at that, it gets at that use of a local facility or county facility for longer-term housing of federal.
Yeah, and those facilities can be private as well.
Are we experiencing that here in Idris Khan County Jail?
Our county facility is housing federal prisoners for defined periods of time, yeah. Not, not to the extent that you're seeing it elsewhere in the country, but that's because they lack, you know, partly because they lack the space for it.
Yeah, it, it just goes to the term, if you build it, they will come, and they'll figure out a way to do it, and this is just, you know, making sure that we have good definitions to, to, you know, get what the intent of what the city wants, so.
Yeah, John's bringing up a good point, if the, more defined, I'm, I know I'm stepping back, but thinking to the future, if we have more restrictive definitions that could only play to help us in the future for things we may not yet be seeing coming.
It also sounds like that's helpful for staff, too, I mean, I'm hearing that loud and clear.
I agree.
So are you guys saying you, you want staff to move forward with these, the set?
I'm okay with it as is.
I am, too.
If it benefits staff, yes.
Hmm, I agree.
I agree, too. Did you still want to include juvenile in the, in the detention facility definition?
We should probably get more restrictive, like he said, because the more restrictive and, and more definitions we have for this kind of zoning isn't going to hurt, especially with staff sharing what their concerns are.
What if I, what if I rephrase it? There's, there, the reason that we pulled the detention facility, do you, is staff aware of a reason that it doesn't include juvenile in there?
No, we could add the, the juvenile piece.
Seems like it'd be more encompassing.
Okay. All right. I would still like them, I would still like it a little more streamlined, but that's fine. It sounds like, uh, it sounds like the rest of the board, uh, you, you've kind of convinced them that you, you did the right thing, so.
Yeah, I'm supportive of staff.
Well, no, I'm not, not supportive of staff, Stacy, I mean, geez. All right, so, so that's the first thing staff wanted from us, yes? I would go back to, if we kept all of these, I would still want to pull out public safety from government services, because we have public safety services, and then we have government services. We don't actually need, it's like you, we don't need, why, why use public, why do we need public safety services if it's in government services? But more to the point, why would we want to lump things like a police station, a fire station, an emergency rescue station um, with, um, something like, you know, the clerk's office? Those are two very different things.
Yeah, so that's a really good question, right? Like, so staff put this together, and it sounds like this is helpful for them. So why is it helpful for you to have them separated?
You know, this, this gives a clear definition for us as we look through forward and, and planning over the next, you know, the CIP, and looking at future projects that the city's going to have. This really gives a clear definition for us, and clear definition for the planning board, for, for projects coming forward that the city is going to actually put forward.
So I understand that, right, that's why you would have a separate definition. But if you have separate definitions, why include? You have a definition that includes something like fire stations, police stations, okay, sheriff substation. But then under government services, you have those same, those same things. I guess I'm saying, I agree they should be separated, those two things, so why, why that crossover?
Yeah, I think, I think you're absolutely right, um, and I, as I look at this, if you, if you wanted my honest opinion, I, I do like public safety services better, because it really defines excluding the interim incarceration, lockup, and jail facilities in that definition, so I think that it does a better job of defining that, so.
I mean, I like government services, I think it should stay, I just think that public safety, police, fire, and emergency rescue should be booted from that, because we already have that in public safety services.
I agree with that. We can strike it, all in favor?
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Any, any other feedback on the definitions? Okay, so staff's got some, you've got our feedback there. What was that, was staff hoping for us to look at this matrix right now? Was this for us, this, was this for us to sort of, do you want us to think about this for, like, a future meeting? Do you, what, what's going on here?
We, we don't have a lot of time left to prepare a draft for a public hearing, so I think this gives you a chance to think about it, if there's anything that jumps out you, at you, that you, you think should be different tonight, great, give us that feedback. Otherwise, I think you've got a month to think about it, and you can make that, any changes as part of a recommendation to the city council based on a draft that gets presented in February.
Okay.
And, and I can, I can say that the lockup facility, the definition, and then the jail, as we have it identified in here, you won't find that in the, in the actual land use ordinance in each area. I'm going to eliminate, we're going to eliminate those, I mean, that was some feedback we already got from the board. Um, so that, those will be removed, keep the definitions. But other than that, will, the, the remaining will, will be the same as, as it's shown here, unless we get some additional feedback today.
Okay, so unless someone has specific feedback right now, mulled over, we were expecting to see this as a draft length, like, this will be presented as a, as a a, a text amendment, and at that point, between now and then, if you decide, you know, something doesn't belong somewhere, then it's incumbent upon you to utilize the amendment process to, yes? This is what staff is asking for?
Yes.
All right.
And as, as a special exception, there's typically some criteria, um, and in our discussions really was uh, what we identified, what, that the board or the council could consider as part of a review like that is just, what are the impacts of a proposed facility, that we'd want to see that information, some kind of a report? And what are the needs for the community, so that you can compare the impacts to the needs in either the planning board, or there are some places where the legislative body, the city council, makes a finding that the needs exceed the impacts before it comes to the planning board as a special exception, so. Uh, we could prep it for either way, either that's a planning board decision as a special exception criteria, or as a council decision, if you want to hold the public hearing based on that, or if you have a direction, we can prep it for one way or the other.
For the recommendation, that we recommend that those additional regulations be looked at by either here or there, you're saying?
Yes, yep.
Is there preference? My preference would actually be that that's a big enough deal, um, that, um, I, I think it should probably go before both, um, but at least the city council. They're already going to come before us for a special exception. Um, so they'll come before us, but I think some of these things are big enough that they should really get kicked up to council, too. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Paul? Okay, so write up the draft, um, language to include that, I guess. Is there anything else staff needs from us on this? All right, we are on to public comment.
We're good.
Yep. All right, so are there any members of the public that wish to address the board? We have the same rules as earlier, we ask that you, uh, state your name and address when you begin, speak into the mic for the public record, uh, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Joe Gray, Sopers Mill Road. I'm a little confused, because recently you guys are talking about a public opinion, how important that is, do you want to put out a survey and get all the public opinion, because it's really important. But earlier tonight, there was a lot of people in this room who gave you their opinion. And there was nobody who provided an opposite opinion. And this has happened quite a bit in the past year, where the room is full of people giving testimony about why something shouldn't be done. And yet, this board has said, well, we're going to do it anyway. So if public opinion is really important, then you need to listen to public opinion and not just push your own agenda. This is supposed to be a non-bias board, but a couple of you are being very aggressive in going after things. It's not your place. You're supposed to sit there and go pros and cons, work it out, discuss it amongst yourselves, and then make a proper decision. But there's not a lot of that going on. There's a lot of pushing points one way, and no pushback the other way. You're supposed to be a professional board. You're supposed to also listen to the people, because it's the people in the city that should be controlling what goes on in the city. Sure, some of us don't know the ins and outs of all the little rules, but we do know what we do and don't like. And again, you said public opinion is important, so listen to the public. Another thing, the comprehensive plans are a guide. They're not set in stone, they can change, especially the future land use plans. For example, the city, since at least 2010 comp plan, wants to put a turnpike exit on Riverside Drive. They really want to do that, it was even mentioned again tonight. But the main turnpike authority says, no, and they're the ones that control that. So we might want something, but that doesn't mean it's going to happen, so should we then plan our whole city around something that we don't control? Kind of does make sense to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Uh, I would like to address that, that though, uh, nobody said that we don't listen to public opinion, I think that the idea of the, um, I think that the idea of the, um, petition came up, um, and it was quite clear that we can't, so far, do people sign the petition? What does the, what is the content of the petition? We're listening to the content of what people say. And it is okay for members of the public to present a concept or an idea, and for members of the planning board to, disagree, for instance, there was this. For instance, there was discussion of runoff. That's something the board discussed after, right? These, so I take issue with this idea that the planning board members don't listen to the public, or that somehow we told them that it's not our job to listen to them. It was quite clear that it's not our job to pay attention to how many people are for or against something. It's our job to pay attention to the content of their argument or the content of their comments. And so that's very important for planning board members to remember moving forward. In fact, you're legally tasked with doing so. So I just wanted to address that. Next item, miscellaneous upcoming agenda items.
So, next month, we have, it looks like we have a few subdivision, a few subdivision proposals to review for February. We have another Ag Zone workshop to bring back what we talked about tonight. We have the public hearing for the public safety facilities. And I think there might be more.
Yeah, we'll just add the subdivisions. We have two three-lot subdivisions, so they're a single lot being split into three parcels in the T42B zoning district area. We have Phase Two of Stable Ridge at 555 Court Street, so additional units there. And we have another application that came in incomplete. The applicant knows it's incomplete. We'll be reviewing that through the staff process to give them feedback, but we don't believe that one will be on the February agenda. That'll be on a March planning board agenda for, I think it's 21 multifamily units off of Center Street. So there's a lot, there's a lot coming, and we might be talking to the chair about how do we make the agenda in February more manageable? Still meeting some of our deadlines, as well as the project requirements, and it may require a second meeting.
I think it might require a special meeting. Also, on the upcoming agenda items, I'm sure staff didn't forget, February is when we have the election of our officers, and it generally occurs... I think we tried it at the beginning of a meeting once. That kind of worked, kind of didn't...
I think it was at the end of the meeting.
At the end of a meeting. So... We will have those next meeting, and I think, having seen it, it probably works best at the end of a meeting, rather than having someone be elected and then have to run that meeting. Anyone who is on the planning board can sit as chair or vice chair. It's not limited to the full members, I believe. I will double-check that, but if I remember correctly, qualifications is just that you are a member of the planning board. Chairs obviously act as the presiding officer and run the meeting. Vice chair does so when the chair is absent. And if anyone has any questions about it, feel free to ask Riley and I. And the way that process works is that if you wish to be nominated, you should really come having spoken to someone else, so that they can nominate you. And if you don't wish to be nominated, and there's someone specific that you would like to nominate, then you should think about who that person is. And I will be quite frank right now. I, my preference is to not be nominated, again. And that's because this is my 12th year on the board, and if I were to be nominated again, it means that I would have sat four out of those 12 years as chair of the planning board.
Each is just a number.
Nope, I just don't think it's good for us as a group to have one person who kind of like constantly does that. A good learning experience for folks, and I think should be shared, so... That's all I have.
We will also be, I don't know if we'll get into the details of it because of the extensive agenda, but we're scheduled to review policies and procedures. So I think our goal is at a minimum to have feedback from the city attorney on your existing policies. Give that to you next meeting, and then we can look at really working on it in March, probably.
Okay. Anything else? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? All those in favor? We are adjourned.